This meeting is called to order. Welcome to all of you. This is the first regular school board meeting of the academic year for the year 2012. So we've got some, some teachers and some new student trustees, and it's just great to have everybody who's with us tonight, so welcome. This evening trustee Smith, trustee Dirk, and trustee Toth are all working out of town and are not able to be with us. Trustee Dirk will call in later when he's finished working, so he'll join us near the end of the meeting. We are very fortunate with this busy evening to have two of our high school trustees with us. We have Tanner Block representing Sentinel High School, and we have Tucker Richly representing Willard School. And I'd like to ask these two gentlemen to lead us in the pledge. If you'd all stand, please. And trustees, we'll move on to review, revise, and approve the agenda, and I will mention at the top that I do have a request from our student trustees to move them to the top of the meeting. Tanner is actually missing a soccer game right now to be with us, so if we could do them first, it would help them out. Is there any objection to that? Okay, seeing none, we'll move student trustees up. Is there any other revision or change to the agenda that anyone would like to see? No? All right, then the rest of the agenda will stand. Let's move right away then to our student trustees. Tanner and Tucker, I'll let you decide who'd like to begin.
To start off, over the summer, 2012 graduate Laura Van Essen from Sentinel recently won the National Trig Star Contest, which is a math competition. Her award was over $7,000 in scholarships, and she was a six-time state winner of the national trade contest. Other events over the summer include international travel. Last spring, 23 students went to Costa Rica, I was included in that 23, for Sentinel's Spanish club. Over the summer, French club went to France, and currently we have nine Japan students and two teachers coming from our sister school in Kumamoto, Japan, from September 22nd, it's 22nd to September 30th. Other extracurricular activities going on at Sentinel include MUN, United Nations, National Honor Society, and HOSA, Health Occupation Students of America. All three of these clubs have their first meeting today and weekend soon. Fall sports, boys and girls soccer both compete tonight, boys are playing right now, as stated, and girls just won a 2-1 victory over Flathead. Boys and Girls Cross Country is going on, I think they have a meet this weekend, and they've been active and running. Other fall sports include volleyball and golf, which are also, golf leaves for a tournament on Thursday, and volleyball is playing Flathead tonight. Spartan football just came off a recent win over cross-town rivals Hellgate. And other than that, next meeting I'll report on some upcoming clubs such as speech and debate, which will have their meeting in the next two weeks. Drama Club is currently in production of a musical, which will perform sometime this semester, and our Deca Run Sparta Mart just opened this Monday, so all that's getting going, and I'm really excited for the year. Thanks.
Thanks Tanner. Tucker?
All right, this is what's going on at Willard this year. We started the school year with 52 new students to join 103 returning students, giving Willard a big opening of school enrollment. We are at our capacity with 155 students, and there are more than 30 new applications waiting to be screened for admission. We are planning a school-wide celebration for the U.S. Constitution Day next Monday, September 17th, as well as activities for American Indian Heritage Day on September 28th. Our follow-up in house, the Second Annual Chili Burn Contest, is this Thursday, September 13th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. We invite students, parents, and all our Willard neighbors for a free chili dinner. You are all invited too. October is our annual neighborhood cleanup. Last year, picked up more than 500 pounds of trash and litter for the neighborhoods within 10 blocks of school. Even though our students didn't originally drop the litter, we care about the reputation of our schools, we try to keep the neighborhood picked up. We had our honor roll assembly on the first day of school to recognize achievement of our returning students during the last quarter of last year. 18 students were on the honor roll with grades above 3.0, 29 were on the high honor roll with grades above a 3.5, six returning students had all As or 4.0 GPAs. Most students, when they come to Willard, earn the highest grades of their high school career, not because Willard is easy, but because they try harder and are proud of getting good grades. Also, our teachers are continuing working on improving students' writing this year. We'll be using My Access software again, plus all the teachers are participating in staff development provided by the National Writing Project and Heather Bruce of the University of Montana. That's what's happening at Willard this month. Please stop by anytime to check us out.
Great. Thanks Tucker. Well, it sounds like we're off to a great start at Sentinel and at Willard. So if you gentlemen would like to carry on with your activities, please feel free to do that. Thanks for being here. I do have written reports from Hellgate and from Big Sky. So I'll start with Stella Shannon. Well, I remember her from last year, she was our student trustee from Hellgate. She says, actually, this will be her third year serving student, as student trustee from Hellgate High School. She's a junior at Hellgate, she's enrolled in junior and senior level AP classes, she's swimming and doing ballet, she acts and plays piano, she's speaking Spanish and French, and she is excited to be a trustee for us one more time, so hopefully we'll hear from what's going on at Hellgate next time. At Big Sky High School, Brielle, Brielle, let me see, Brielle Rowley and Haley Zetterberg will be our student trustees. They couldn't find anybody to take their place, since they're both involved in sports, they weren't able to be here, but they have an announcement of some of the things that are going on. Student government is currently planning for Homecoming Week, which is scheduled for the first week in October. They're planning a semi-formal homecoming dance this year, which is new for Big Sky. It's scheduled to happen the Saturday after the homecoming game against Butte. They're planning a bonfire pep rally for the Wednesday of that week, which will include the Booster Club and hopefully the community and Big Sky families. Considering the fire conditions, however, they may have to put that on hold, and I think trustee Toth, who's out fighting a fire in Idaho, would probably say that's a good decision. Student government also created a new club this year with a main vision of increasing the spirit within the school. They call themselves the Bleacher Creatures, also known as the Spirit Squad. Anyone is allowed to join, but they have to commit to help planning pep rallies, decorating the halls and lockers, making signs, increasing spirit at games, and making special things for the athletes and other involved students in the school. Everything they do is run through student government. The Bleacher Creatures and Key Club are also helping to plan the semi-formal dance. Scott Matthews is the head of Respect Club, Flagship, and Connections Crew. He helped Brielle and Haley plan a great freshman first day this year. The Connections Crew kids all helped out to make it a great assembly and a good first day for the incoming Eagles. Brielle and Haley also rapped a welcoming song for them to make the day a little more exciting, wouldn't that have been fun to see? Many of the clubs at our school are just getting started this year and are having their very first meetings this week. As for sports, the football team is on a two-game winning streak. Some of the players have already broken records for the school this year, and they're expected to do very well. The girls varsity volleyball team has had only one conference game, which they lost, but they're hoping for a win, I think, tonight. The boys varsity soccer team has only played one game and lost by a few points, but they're a young team, and they're striving to bond and push for a win tonight. The girls varsity soccer team recently tied with Hellgate on a good path. The cross-country team recently placed sixth at a big meet in Spokane, that was the girls, and the boys placed seventh. The golf team is off to a rough start, but they hope to place at their meet this Thursday and Friday. As for academics at Big Sky, they recently started the year with the Health Science Academy for incoming freshmen. It has not only increased the freshman class numbers, but also brought the teachers of the academy into a big collaboration of good ideas and hard work. Mr. Lebaskey is hoping to see great things from this new program. This is all they have to report, thanks for understanding that they have conflicting schedules, and we appreciate their report. Girls, I'm sorry I didn't do you justice, but thanks for sending in the information, we're happy to have it. All right. Trustees, we'll move on to approval of the minutes, starting with the budget hearing minutes from August 14th. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by trustee Knapp, seconded by trustee Bixler, any corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of approving them, and that is approved, those are approved unanimously. And then we have the minutes of the regular meeting from August 14th. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by trustee Lem, seconded by trustee Bixler, any corrections? Seeing none, all in favor of approving those minutes, those are approved unanimously as well. And now we're going to move on to our community connection. Heather Davis Schmidt will do the honors of introducing our guest speaker tonight.
Wonderful, thanks trustee Raybine. So, it is my pleasure to introduce to all of you Andrea Strzicz. She has been the Rattlesnake Parent Teacher Association President for the past four years. Her term did just end, as her students are moving on to middle school, but she has really done a lot of great work for Rattlesnake, and she's going to bring to us a parent perspective on what it is students should know and be able to do in the 21st century, and what they should be able to do as they graduate from our schools. In addition, you should also know that Andrea serves as our MANT trainer for the district, and so also brings that perspective with her tonight when she addresses us. So welcome. Thank you.
Didn't have to move it down too far. So again, I'm Andrea Strzicz, and thank you for the opportunity to come and visit tonight and speak with you for a bit. Along with me being a parent of two kids at Washington Middle School, I'm fortunate to be a parent of one left at Rattlesnake, and so I'm a parent of three children. And I've done the MANT training for the school district, the crisis intervention training for the last 12 years. We train a lot of teachers and parent educators and principals throughout the year, quite a few of those. So I bring some broad experience in that way, and then also being the PTA president of the Rattlesnake Elementary School. One of the things we did do there is we raised our own funding there at Rattlesnake to get, begin the process of getting iPads at our school, so we're beginning that process. Certainly, there's a lot of things to talk about, and I don't have much time, so I'm going to just limit it to a few things that I thought about, more sort of philosophical perspective kinds of things. Along with the idea of students needing the technology and access to compete in the world and, you know, the ever-changing world, certainly that. They spoke about the writing skills, I think one of the things in college, I also teach a class at the university, is the writing skills seem to need some improvement, so most certainly that. And also their build is study skills, the ability to tackle and, you know, learn how to study in real adequate ways before they reach college or whatever they, whatever they move into. So having said these and focusing on some of these areas, I want to focus on some equally important things called the non, they talk about these in terms of non-cognitive skills. And one of the big ones there is, the first is the building of character, and you might have heard some conversations around that, which is the idea of having them understand, they use terminology like grit and determination and hard work and creative thinking and critical thinking skills. So I understand the need for testing, for maps, you know, all these tests and all this sort of thing, we need benchmarks and all that sort of stuff, I understand that, grades and all that. But I think one of the things we really have to be aware of and look at is that the only measure of success cannot be in the grades that are attained, that it really, the focus needs to be in part on the hard work and the determination, and that that is the success, not necessarily the end result, but the process in getting there, and those are those character building skills. So that when people come up against things that are difficult, they have a roadmap, they've been there before, and they push through it. Those are a little bit more, less, they're more tangible sorts of things. So the value needs to be placed on the effort of hard work that goes into the achievement, not just the outcome. So this process of working hard and important, most importantly, being recognized, the work and the hard work needs to be as equally as recognized as sort of the outcome. This is the development of skills that students are able to face challenges head-on, and success comes not only the end result, but in their ability to move through things. So our perception, our philosophy when we're interacting with those. That when faced with greater challenges, they develop the critical life skill to work through these things, that they don't come upon it and feel like, oh, I can't do it, I've never been here before. So the other piece in doing my MANT training, certainly the kids that I come in contact with, is that we need to bring all of our kids along. Not just the kids in the gifted ed program, or the kids that test out well, or those sorts of things, but we need to offer opportunity for success in whatever way that is for every kid that is coming along. We need to try and bring them all along. And we need to challenge every kid to whatever level that is for them, and honor that work and be aware of that part. The other piece of that, that comes in with that, that's part of that, is that idea of relationship, that we cannot ever underestimate the impact that we as adults or teachers and people in this field have on the lives of our students. They need to feel safe emotionally and socially, they need a rich environment where somebody believes in them. And I'm sure you heard stories and stories from people that will say the impact of a relationship will propel students forward, it will send them on a completely different trajectory. And it's the idea that we need to help them all believe in themselves and identify themselves as learners, and identify themselves as being successful regardless of their grade, regardless of what program they're in, regardless of any of that, that we need to really have them, help them to identify themselves in that way. And I, again, we can't underestimate the power of that relationship component. And then the last component of that is just, we need to enhance that sense of belonging to a larger community. So helping them develop their sense of belonging in their schools, their sense of belonging to the Missoula community, and their sense of belonging that they belong to a larger world community. We need to provide opportunity and experiences to connect them to these larger communities and challenge their worldview. There needs to be some insight gains from understanding that there are responsibilities also that come along with being an active participant in any community. And just a couple ideas around that, one of those is I invite more parental involvement, not necessarily in the elementary school, because it seems like that's when parents are all around, but most certainly in the middle schools and the high schools as well, we need to have them feel that sense of connectedness with one another and with their parents and this larger community. And then the other component there is just that idea that our teachers are our greatest asset, and so we need to be supportive of them and encourage them and recognize their impact on the work that they do, and give them every means possible to develop those relationships, provide opportunity for them to not necessarily focus on the outcomes, but be able to have that framework where we really try and develop that character building in the students that we serve. And that would be it. I mean, that's all we can talk about tonight, but thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Andrea, thanks so much for being with us and for sharing those important thoughts, we appreciate it. Dr. Posel has a comment or two.
Andrea, thank you for being here this evening. I think you hit the target in terms of what education should be, what we should be striving to achieve regarding all of our students, and I strongly believe that our, the mission of our school district, the actual vision of our school district, that all students will graduate regardless of their circumstances and abilities, really drives home what you had to say this evening. And in addition, programs such as the International Baccalaureate Program, a worldly academic program where students are asked to stretch along with staff, I think is very consistent with, with your message. You're truly on the mark on, on what we should be doing in our schools and what we expect that our students should take away when they graduate from our, from our school district. Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to visitors and correspondence. Correspondence, this is our packet, and now we'll move to public comment regarding non-agenda items. Could you please state your name?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bob Lucino, and I was here before you, about a year ago, singing the praises of the nurses here in School District One, and of course, I have nothing but admiration for the board, because I know you don't get much for all the time you put into it, other than the satisfaction of helping your community and helping improve the education we have in this town. You don't get health insurance for being on the board, and you don't get a stipend like the city council does. I was just thinking back, as Andrea was speaking, my first, oldest child started in 81, 1981 in the school system, and my fifth will be finished in 2021. Is there an award for that? Forty years, it's kind of biblical almost. But anyway, I'm here about our fifth child, who I spoke about last year. We had an unexpected diagnosis with him. He has type 1 diabetes, and he was diagnosed a year ago. It's the unpreventable kind, the unavoidable kind, and actually, only 5% to 10% of diabetics in the United States have this kind. It can't be reversed, and you can't avoid it, it's just a question of time when it hits. So he's doing well, and thanks to your nurses. He did wonderfully in June. He graduated at the top of his class, he's, he's just doing wonderfully, and, and a part of the team, a significant part of the team, are your nurses. And as we navigated through that last year, I became literate, a little more literate about how you're set up. I know from sitting at another meeting last year that, I think you had an unanticipated, perhaps, windfall, well, I say that probably, it's probably not the right word, but I think you, you received some funding from the state that maybe you weren't expecting, I'm thinking it was a few hundred thousand dollars last spring, but maybe it didn't come through, I don't know. I know that you have 100 new students in the school system this year, I know you have a surge in the lower grades. I know that, and I'm guessing that, that you're faced with children in the school district in all 17 schools that have more, I'm going to guess, have more needs per capita, more medical needs per capita requiring nursing care now than, than we did in the 1980s, certainly than when I was in school in the 1960s, because kids who were not mainstream then are mainstream now into, into classrooms that require medical assistance. So getting to my point, it seems to me from my vantage that, that although we have six and a half tremendous nurses, and I may be slightly off in that count, involving the supervisor, some are RNs, some are LPNs, it seems that it's not quite enough to get the job done. And I also think that there's a real push, a real surge for these nurses around the noon hour, as they run around to the schools to help the kids that need their dosage. So my son, back to him, it's very critical that, and he's not at the age yet where he can dose himself solo. He's on an insulin pump, and that pump serves as his pancreas. And type 1 diabetics are 100% on insulin, or they die in two to four weeks. So thank goodness for insulin, but it can also be your worst enemy if you overdose. So that's something we have to be vigilant about. And so when we're talking about a third grader, we certainly don't want him to give himself too much insulin before lunch, which is why your wonderful nurses like Jenny Hill and Lisa are there, to provide oversight, because they're so squeezed, and they're running around from Lewis and Clark, and they're trying to get up to Rattlesnake School by 12, sometimes that just doesn't happen, because things occur with the previous case. So, the second part of my presentation this morning, or this evening, is I know a little bit about workers' compensation insurance, that's what I specialize in, I've been doing it for 16 years. I've had accounts where these, these businesses had hundreds of nurses, nurse case managers and personal care workers, that were going to and from various case assignments, that's recognized as a high exposure time, in your case, for the school district. You don't want these nurses having a car accident, and even if they're driving safely as they're rushing up to Rattlesnake from Lewis and Clark through construction and Van Buren, or whatever it is, even if they're driving defensively, and even if they're doing everything right, if someone crosses the line and hits them, it's going to be a work comp claim for you. So we know that injured workers, one of the high exposures, regardless of what the occupation is, is driving. And so I'm just simply pointing out that the school district has a unique exposure with these nurses that are running all around the school district to meet their responsibilities. And if there's a way for you to get at least a half-time, another part-time nurse, I get the feeling that would really help them in their noon time, I think that's their crunch time. I know that as much as you're trying, the school district does not meet the best practices that are asked for in school districts around the country, meaning one nurse for every 750 children, students. I think we're somewhere around one nurse to every thousand or so, I could be off in my math. You're doing the best you can, I understand that, but this is, this is not an amenity when we're talking about medication and dosing and these sorts of things. This is, this is really a necessity involving the life and health, not only of the child, but of nurses who are trying to do their job professionally. So I would ask you to revisit this, and can you visit this even this fall, even this month? Can you deliberate and see if there's some funding, if you perceive a need, I perceive a need, talk with your nurses, as you do, and if you can find, if there's that need, which I think there is for at least another half-time nurse, to assist with the lunchtime rounds, can you, can you find some money in the budget to provide at least a part-time, one other part-time nurse to help them? And I thank you for all you do. Thanks. Any questions?
Bob, thank you, congratulations on your multiple decades of great parenting, and glad your son's doing so well, really.
Is there a rebate or anything?
Yeah, I think we need to talk about whether or not we can invent a special award for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for being here and sharing your concerns, it's great to hear about those.
Good evening. I'm Melanie Charleston, and I'm president of the Missoula Education Association. As you're well aware, under new business this evening, you have the opportunity as a board to voice your opinions in regards to the ratification of the collective bargaining agreement between Missoula EA and MCPS. Our membership voted on August 24th, and we positively ratified the CBA with a 92% favorable vote. I anticipate a positive response with all of you this evening as well. Now, while Now, while no contract is ever the perfect contract, the negotiating team and the vast majority of our membership do believe that this CBA is fair and appropriate at this time. So on behalf of the MEA membership, I'm asking for your full support of the collective bargaining agreement later this evening. As also, as a member of the MEA MFT State Board of Directors and as the NEA Director representing Montana, I would be remiss if I did not remind you and our listening community that we are a mere 56 days away from Election Day. And those of you voting absentee, you'll be receiving your ballots within the next few weeks. I am urging all of you to educate yourself as to those candidates who are in support of public education here in Montana and on the national front. Why am I emphasizing public education candidates? Because that is the life work and passion of every teacher, every support staff, and every administrator in this district. We teach all children regardless of their abilities, regardless of their economic statics or their past accomplishments, and we strive daily at MCPS for student success for all. And I'm not willing to allow those precious public dollars be diluted to special interest vouchers and charter schools. And I hope you all stand with me on this issue. Educate yourself, and most importantly, vote. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Melanie. Is there further public comment?
I'm the Cataloging Systems Specialist for Missoula County Public Schools, which is primarily library services, although we are kind of expanding our operations somewhat. But I'm here to speak to you about the Big Read. Molly Letterman from the Missoula Public Library was unable to be here, but she sent me some key points.
Diane, will you say your name for the record?
Diane Andersons. And there's a packet in the trustees' boxes, if you've not already received it, on the Big Read. So based on what Molly gave me, the Big Read is the program of the National Endowment of Arts designed to revitalize the role of literary reading in America. The program was created in direct response to declining reading rates among all age groups in the nation and since its creation in 2006. It has become the largest literary project in the history of the federal government. The goals of the Big Read are to revitalize the role of literary reading in America. Rates of reading and literacy have a direct impact on education, employment, community participation, and active or inactive citizenry. Number two is to connect with lapsed and reluctant readers, both young and old. The third point is to explore a book through a variety of lenses, which helps people find connections between their own interests and a work of literature, art, music, theater, history, film, and so forth. One of our Native American specialists, Mrs. Kate Beals, was invited to collaborate with the Missoula Public Library staff to ensure that the National, the Native American perspective on the Homestead Act, which is 150 years old at this time, to make sure that it is fully represented. OPI will soon distribute the Montana Tribal Histories Educator's Resource Guide, which includes a chapter on allotments and homesteading, losing the land. You will find a copy of the topics and classroom activities in your packet. The fourth bullet point is to create a community partnership. This broadens the reach of the project to a community and brings new insights and ideas to programs and the project as a whole. 4,700 copies have been distributed to, of the Big Read, which is My Antonia, the Middle Read, which is Hattie Big Sky, and Little Read, which is Sarah Plain and Tall. These have been distributed to schools, libraries, the Pavarello Center, Watson Children's Center, Salvation Army, hospitals, and more. Putting free books into the hands of participants significantly increases our ability to reach lapsed and reluctant readers and get them to start reading. The program will run from October 1st through the 31st. All will be related to the Big Read title, My Antonia, by Willa Cathery, and more information and a complete list of programs can be found on our website, which is www.readmissoula.org. This is the second year of MCPR's participation in the Big Read program. The Big Read program meets MCPS district goals, MCPS model of change, and enhances learning environments and participation beyond the bricks and mortar of our schools through community engagement between students, staff, parents, and other community partners through exhibits, discussions, and activities. So I would encourage you in that to participate. We also have books, or the book is actually on CDs. We can distribute that through the library or probably get you a copy of that if you're unable to actually physically read the book. And also, there's some more packets behind me on the table, too, and that be sure to pick up information there. And if you need bookmarks or anything of that nature, just let me know or let the public library folks know. And I'm hoping that maybe the next board meeting in October, that Molly will be here to tell you how well this is being facilitated throughout the community. But we're really excited that Mrs. Beals was asked to participate and make sure that we had the Native American perspective in that. And I just, she's very excited about it, and the public library was thrilled to have her participate.
Thanks, Diane. Is there further public comment? Further public comment? I always have to wait and see if there's somebody coming up behind the podium that I can't see. No? Okay, great. We'll move on then. Now to student recognition, and Lisa Hendricks, the new principal of Hellgate High School.
Would it be all right if I introduce Lisa?
Oh, introduce Lisa. That'd be great. Give us a little more information. Heather Davis Schmidt will do the honors.
Wonderful. Well, I'm thrilled to introduce to you Lisa Hendricks. She's the new principal of Hellgate High School. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to check out the article in the Missoulian about the work that she's been doing already at Hellgate. But it is my honor to let her tell you more about our student recognition tonight.
And I'm just going to introduce Beth Huggett, a business teacher at Hellgate, but she's so much more, as many of you know. Most notably, she is the coordinator at our school for our senior projects and does a wonderful job. That kicked off last week. She, we had our student assembly. We have our parent assembly next week, and she works tirelessly to get that project off, off the ground. Tonight, she's going to introduce a recent award winner that shows her dedication in the classroom as well. Beth?
Thank you. I'm so privileged to be here tonight. This is a very unique award that I'm presenting tonight to a Hellgate student, and hopefully it's not the first of this kind for MCPS students. And that's one of the reasons why I wanted to bring him before you, to recognize him. This award comes from, let me give you a little background to save an idea. SIFMA, which is the Securities Industries, Industry and Financial Markets Association Foundation, is a national foundation. And the National Council on Economic Education have provided us with a critical thinking essay-writing contest at a national level. The writing contest has been going on for three years now. It's so large in scope that 1,900, it takes 1,900 of their foundation members, who are all industry-related professionals in securities and investment, to evaluate these essays. And we rolled out in our school district last spring our personal finance curriculum, our brand-new personal finance curriculum. In doing so, I'm a strong opponent, proponent of writing in the classroom and writing across the curriculum. That's, writing and reading is, is big to me. I'm sixth straight, even though I'm a business teacher, I'm sixth straight trained, I'm holistic trained. I have worked with Beverly Chin at the university with Mousois in grading the junior writing papers for 11 years now. It's something I'm passionate about, even though I'm not the best writer in the world. I'm kind of a financial person. I think it's such an important component that we need to bring into all of our classes. And so when I found out that there was this essay-writing contest, my students weren't happy to hear about it necessarily. But I told the personal finance classes, we're going to go ahead and we're going to do this. It's the first time MCPS has been involved in it. And we choose the top 10 essays. And the way we implemented it, it's a writing prompt from the national level. The students are given a writing prompt. We, as teachers, read their first draft. Then we brought in the writing coaches, and the writing coaches are wonderful. And we have a retired John Hancock advisor as one of our writing coaches, and he was thrilled to come in and actually do some reading and writing relating to personal finance. And so he was all gung ho. So we brought in 13 writing coaches. They worked with the students one-on-one with their final essay copy. We sent 10 off to the national level. The national winners get a five-day trip to New York City to, three of those days, they get to spend with, on the stock exchange with a mentor doing a job shadow. That's our goal, to get to that point. But what we're so honored with tonight and to present coming out of last spring, and I just got the certificate, and that's why we're just finally doing this award, to present every, they pick a state winner for each state for the writing, the essay contest. And extremely fortunate, over 90 schools in Montana participate in this activity. And it was one of our young freshmen at Hellgate High School that won the writing contest for the state of Montana last year. He had his bio, his picture, put on the website of the Montana Council on Economic Education this summer. And I would like to present to you Nick Hinricher and his mother Cindy. And this certificate comes from the National Foundation. It's a beautiful certificate from SIFMA, and then it's signed by their National Executive Director and also signed by the State Director for the Montana Council on Economic Education. So here you go, Nick.
Would you like to say a few words?
When I first started personal finance, I didn't have that much knowledge of any kind about the stock market or even how you would purchase these said stocks and bonds and mutual funds. And I'd like to personally thank Ms. Bethany Huggett and Mr. Ross Gustafson for helping me round out the edges of my essay. And I'd like to thank the Board of Trustees for presenting me with this award. Thank you.
Nick, if you wouldn't mind coming up, we'd like to congratulate you individually and your mom.
I would just like to thank you for your dedication to your students, your dedication to your school and what you teach every day, and the fact that you go beyond the call of duty every day to make sure you're providing our students with the best possible teaching and learning environment. You're a real credit to Hellgate High School, to your profession, and to our school district, and I, I thank you.
Thank you.
Very sincerely.
And I'd just like to thank all four of you for being here tonight and for shining the spotlight on Nick and talking a little bit about this new program that you're involved in, Beth. It's just wonderful. We're going to be watching for great things in the future, too. We got our eye on you, Nick. All right. Thanks so much. We'll move on to reports now, trustees. The Health Insurance Trust Fund reports in our packet as our committee reports. We've heard from our student trustees, and now we have announcements from trustees. Is there anybody who has something they'd like to share tonight? Trustee Sadler.
In our packet, there was a list of our addresses and email accounts, and my email account is, is not what's listed. About in 2009, my email was stolen. And if anybody has ever had that happen to you, it is a horrible event. In fact, you can still email to this account, and they will receive emails, or you might even get an email back from me, but usually asking for money. And, and so that, this is not my email address. So just be aware. It's somebody in England. I don't know what they're doing there. And the other thing is, is I told everybody at the, who was here earlier, that tonight is a gardener's saddest event, and that is, we're having our first frost. So I'm, it, it is kind of, I went out this afternoon and took pictures of the garden and so forth. So those of you who I continually invite to come see my garden, I'll show you pictures next. So thanks.
Thank you, trustee Sadler. We'll grieve both of those events with you. I had mine hacked a month ago, so I know what you're going through. Okay, any other items from trustees? Trustee Knapp.
Two comments. First of all, I would like to thank the administrative staff as well as the MEA MFT and the certified and classified staff, individuals who participated in the contract negotiations and spent the time and really put the effort in, and really did prove that negotiations do not necessarily have to be a contact sport. So thank you very much for your activities and your efforts. That's comment number one. Last night at St. Patrick Hospital, we had a two-hour, very interesting meeting of, it was open to, to the physician population of, of St. Patrick Hospital, but also to a number of community business representatives dealing with healthcare in the business environment. And just hearing the, the pressures that, that the business community is feeling in the world of healthcare expenditures. And the reason I bring this up is I heard a very interesting statistic, which I had never heard before. And that is, we all know about the quote-unquote continuing crisis in, in education and the rankings of the United States relative to other first-world countries in, in educational performance. And it's always interesting to look at the countries that are held up in high esteem for excellence in education, and just a couple of them at the top of the list are generally almost always the Finns, the Swedes, and Singapore. The reason I bring this up is that there was also another interesting statistic that was presented last night, and that is, if you look at healthcare expenditures and you look at education expenditures in those countries relative to ours. In the United States, we are now pushing 18% of our gross domestic product being spent in healthcare. And for the first time in history, spending on education dropped below 5% of the gross domestic product in this country. If you look at the successful countries, those numbers are effectively even, meaning it's a 50-50 split between healthcare and education. I ask you to ask any of you who are listening online to ponder that as you go to the, as you go to the ballot and as you go to the, to the elections this year, and think about where we have our priorities set. And while money isn't everything, money's a lot when it comes to actually resource allocation. So think about that, that number when you go to the ballot this fall. Thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Knapp. Other items from trustees? I'd just like to make one announcement in keeping with the, the financial theme and realizing how desperately school districts across the country are in need of funding and how we have looked to try to raise money in other ways to fund the critical programs that we know we need for students. I'm happy to announce that the Missoula Education Foundation is working very hard to raise money to support programs for our teachers in the classrooms. And they're going to be having a fundraiser on the 27th of this month at 6:00 PM at Missoula Children's Theater. And the main event will be, are you as smart as an MCPS student? So it should be a lot of fun. So it should be a lot of fun and raise, hopefully, a lot of dollars that will support our wonderful teachers in efforts that they have and ideas that they have that they are not able to receive funding from the public sector. If you're interested in doing that, please call three-seven-zero, I'm sorry, three-six, oh, wait a minute. Three-four-zero, three-fourty-six-zero-eighty. Three-four-zero-six-zero-eight-zero. Okay, one more time. Three-fourty-six-zero-eighty to purchase tickets for that event. All right. Thank you. Now we will move on to Mr. Thane, Executive Regional Director for Region One.
Thank you. The first item on my agenda this evening is an enrollment report, and it's, to some degree, a mixed bag, but largely good news. The figures today, I'm going to draw a comparison to September thirteenth of 2011. We experience over the course of a year generally lower enrollments in June than we do in September. As we get close to the end of the year, as students leave the community, they tend not to enroll in schools, and as new students move to the community, they may not enroll. So I thought it best to make a comparison one year ago today to today. In our K5s, we have an increase of seventy-six students. We have, again, the second consecutive year of very large kindergarten enrollment, which is great news for the district. In our sixth through eighth grade enrollment, we have an increase of forty-seven students over last September, which, again, is really nice because, as you know, we've had declining enrollments in the middle school and secondary schools over the last few years. So K8 enrollment, the elementary district, right now is one hundred twenty-three students ahead of last September. The mixed bag, of course, is those smaller enrollments that have been transitioning through our middle schools are transitioning through the high schools and continue to do so. I'm going to attach a caveat to high school enrollment. Today is actually day ten. And in our elementaries and middle schools, our enrollments are small enough that when students are absent, we make a concerted effort to contact all parents live via telephone, ascertain where they may be. In our high schools, we follow the ten-day rule. If the students have not commenced attendance within ten days, they're dropped from the rolls, and at that point in time, we have to ascertain whether they've enrolled in other districts or not. So the high school numbers may be in a state of flux. Seeley Swan High School has an increase of thirteen students, which is significant in terms of their enrollment compared to last September. All three of our urban high schools, however, are down. We're down a total of sixty students comparing last September to this September. Again, those numbers are somewhat preliminary, so we'll see how those shake out as we progress into the school year. The second item on my agenda is Graduation Matters Missoula. And you'll recall in June, I reported at that point in time, we had one hundred fifteen students that had dropped from Missoula County Public Schools. And I also had mentioned to you at that time that we had until the first Monday in October to either recover those students or ascertain whether they've registered in other districts outside of Missoula County Public Schools. And I'm happy to report today that we have recovered or identified that eighteen of those students are in attendance somewhere, which reduces our dropout number to ninety-seven students, ninety-six in the high school and one middle school student who is still unaccounted for. Again, we hope that between now and the first Monday in October to either identify others that have registered elsewhere or to recover additional students. That number compares to ninety-five students the previous year, so relatively static. As you know, with Graduation Matters Missoula, our intent is to decrease those dropout numbers. All of our schools, K through twelve, are presently involved in goal development processes. They'll finish that with their staffs September twenty-fourth, when we have our professional development day, and those goals are due to the district on the twenty-eighth of September. And all high schools will identify a specific target as well as specific strategies relative to reduction of the dropout numbers in Missoula County Public Schools. So we will apprise the board of those goal statements at a later date. Additionally, the class which is currently entering the junior year of high school is the first group that will need to meet the twenty-four-credit rule for graduation. And we have taken a look, both in June as well as now in September, at the credit status of those students. And presently, there are sixty-nine students who have ten or fewer credits in our high schools as juniors. Now, if you recognize that we have a seven-period day in most of our schools, that means that they would need to accrue fourteen credits, two full years, seven successful classes each year to get to twenty-four if they had ten credits. Those that are deficient, of course, we in our schools need to be actively working to assist in credit recovery and pathways so that we can get those students on track. So the high schools have that data. They have the students by name and by credit rating, and we will continue our process to help those students to attain success in the required courses. Third item on the agenda is student achievement, and mainly by way of announcement. And I wish Andrea were still here because many of the things that she described in her Community Connection statement tonight come right from the student outcomes portion of the Twenty-First Century Model of Education. So if you would like to take some time and refresh yourself, the appendices list those outcomes, and it's just exactly what Andrea was describing. In that regard, we have a number of things happening in the schools right now that also reflect elements of the Twenty-First Century. As has been referenced previously, we are working on implementation of the Common Core State Standards. And we're bringing our curriculum into alignment. You, last May and June, reviewed the English Language Arts document, and that is now aligned with the Common Core State Standards. Over the course of this summer, a number of our staff members were engaged in reviewing the math standards and bringing them into alignment with the Common Core State Standards. They'll continue their work on curriculum development throughout the year, and May of 2013 will present that revised curriculum to you. Missoula County Public Schools is very well positioned because those two curricular reviews fell at exactly the right time. Many districts around the state did not have English Language Arts and Math in their review cycle. They're having to double up right now so that they can come into alignment before we assess the Common Core State Standards, beginning with the 2014-15 year, so just two years away. In 2014-15, our assessments will be done in grades three through eight, and grade eleven will change from grade ten to grade eleven. It'll all be technology-based, and in conjunction with OPI right now, we're starting to do a technology readiness assessment to make sure that, again, we're positioned to begin that assessment online. Also in September, we begin our DIBELS assessment, which is the Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills, as well as our MAP testing, which is measures of academic progress. It helps teachers establish baseline data for their students as well as plan instructional grouping to inform their instructional practice. So lots happening right out of the shoots in terms of our student achievement. The final item on my list tonight is Career and Technical Education. We have a group that has been actively meeting. We met twice over the course of the summer, and we continue to meet with two major points of emphasis. Number one, we're looking at something that's known as the Big Sky Pathways. And in Career and Technical Education, what we're trying to do is, number one, identify common course numberings when we have courses that contain the same content standards as college-level courses. And the idea with Big Sky Pathways is that instead of looking at a four-year high school program, we look really at an eight-year plan and ask, how can we effectively teach the prerequisites and some dual-credit concurrent enrollment courses in high school that feed naturally into either our two-year colleges or our four-year institutions? We will be working with the Office of Public Instruction and the Career and Technical Education staff in November to develop Big Sky Pathways so that our students can accrue credit and can matriculate right into those college programs. It's all part of the College Career Readiness Initiative, College Now, and we think that it holds great promise for our students. A second point of emphasis is what's known as articulation agreements. And articulation agreements are similar to pathways in that we determine, again, a long-range plan for our students, but the students take those courses initially in high school without accruing college credit, but it exempts them from those prerequisites once they enter college. Now, if they move into a two-year institution, once they complete the first year, they're actually awarded those credits retroactively at no cost to them. So if in a Career and Technical Education field, they complete a sequence of three courses in high school, they then would begin at the two-year institution at the three-hundred level courses and would retroactively receive credit that is transferable to the four-year institution. So a great benefit for our students. And I would leave you with one final thought, and we discussed it briefly at Teaching and Learning Committee yesterday. If you listened to the president's speech last week, he talked about the fact that there are approximately two million jobs in the United States presently that are not filled because the applicant pool does not have the appropriate technical skills for those positions. And he also stated that the jobs that have been lost recently will not be the same jobs that come back in the new economy, that, again, we have a different set of skills that are required as we move into the more technical aspects of many of the positions that are being called for. So the Career and Technical Education staff sees this as an opportunity for them to recraft themselves, to look at industry certification for their students, the articulation agreements and the pathways, so that we can begin positioning our students to be both college and career-ready. Any questions? Again, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
I'd just like to make one comment, Mr. Thane. We've talked in our discussions about IB over the years about one of the huge advantages for students who graduate with an IB diploma, and that is that they can move into college as sophomores and, you know, effectively be positioned to earn a double major with the same amount of dollars, but will save their parents a tremendous amount of dollars in college credits. And I would just like to point out the same thing with the Pathways Program and with the dual credit that this district has already put in place. For students who take those classes, who sign up for dual credit with the university, who graduate from MCPS with a University of Montana transcript, many schools accept that transcript, and that means there are a whole lot of credits that parents are not needing to pay for in colleges and universities across the country. So we're doing great things on a number of levels and for a number of reasons.
We are, and I'll just follow that comment up. Dr. Posel met with the Sentinel staff today, and one of the statistics that was presented, the class of 2012 that graduated from Sentinel, sixty-one percent of the students had taken either a dual-credit or an AP course. Six hundred ninety courses were completed, and over sixteen hundred credits were awarded to the senior class from 2012. And again, at costs of $300 a credit and more, that is significant. Thank you.
And thank you. Heather Davis Smith.
Wonderful, thank you. Well, I first get to talk to you this evening about International Baccalaureate. As you know, it kicked off at Hellgate High School last month. Nearly one-third of Hellgate High School juniors and seniors are accessing IB courses currently, which is very exciting. There are monthly IB parent meetings also available for anyone who's interested in learning more about IB. In addition to that, both Big Sky High School and Lewis and Clark are pursuing their interest in IB. They've both submitted an Interested Schools Form to the International Baccalaureate Organization. And what that does is it kicks off a feasibility study process for each of those schools, which they will begin in a few weeks. In addition, we have a dual-language immersion program with our intent to begin the program in fall of 2013. We have pulled together a team of district-level and building staff from each region that are going to continue to explore and create an implementation plan for dual immersion. Our plan is to travel to and explore research for some other sites that have successful dual-language immersion programs. We will work for a couple of months on really outlining the who, what, when, where, all the details for a dual-language immersion program. And in February and March, we will have some significant parent meetings that will allow us to begin recruiting students for this dual-language program. The intention is that we would have an April first deadline so that when kindergarten registration occurs, usually around April tenth, we will be ready with at least one class of students accessing dual-language immersion. In addition, I have put together some plans to discuss student recognition. We have around thirty people, that includes parents and teachers and administrators from around the district, who have expressed interest in participating in a conversation around student recognition. This includes recognition of students for their activities as well as their academic achievements. So I will keep you updated and informed on the progress of that work. We will kick that off here in a couple of weeks. I've also begun working with a group of folks on a grading practices committee. Again, it involves parents and teachers and administrators from around the district who will begin having a conversation around the research and what grading really means for our students in our district, what they measure and what it is we want them to measure. So I will also keep you informed with updates for that. We'll begin that work around the first of October. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Dr. Posel.
Yes. I think that in developing your committees, you will involve students on both the student recognition and the grading committees.
Yes.
Yeah. I think that would be very important.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. And now Karen Allen.
Good evening. Mr. Thane did step in my pool a little bit. However, as Ms., I'm going to go back there myself. As Ms. Strivich was, Strizic was talking, I thumbed through my handy-dandy Twenty-First Century Model of Change that I carry with me almost all times and highlighted a few things that related to what she said. First of all, the six elements of change, and I know we repeat these, and it will not surprise, should not surprise anybody if at a meeting in the future I come with what we call an entrance ticket, and I ask you each to identify the six elements of change. But these are to remind all of us that we're working to increase student engagement, that we're working to transform our learning environments so they're more engaging, that we're supporting our innovators when they want to try new things, to help more kids learn to high levels. We're personalizing our professional growth, and instead of having teachers go to big meetings where three hundred people are sitting on folding chairs, we have very focused professional development that's answering real questions that teachers have. We're working to enhance communication. And I must say that I see that every day as I go building to building. One of the things the Executive Regional Directors are meeting every week with every principal, and so that gets us into discussions with principals continuously. And I'm being really impressed with the focus on communication that's going on among staff, between administrators and staff, among staff and parents, students. We just see a focus on communication. And the last is to collaborate to make decisions. And when Mark mentioned that Ms. Strivich was taking ideas from the Student Outcomes section, I actually highlighted a few. Identify strengths and weaknesses and areas for improvement. Seek excellence. Be a self-starter. Recognize opportunities and take initiative. Take task-appropriate risks. Offer ideas. Test new strategies. Take positions. Engage in projects for which there are no clear and established pathways to success. And finally, learn from mistakes and recognize the value of eliminating or refining unsuccessful strategies. What I think is the beauty of this is this is ours already. This is defining the work that teachers are doing with their students in the classroom. And I think it's just so exciting to be able to turn right to elements of the Twenty-First Century Model of Change that are doing the work that we want to be working on. Taking the Twenty-First Century model one step further, we're going to be developing the strategic plan using the Twenty-First Century Model of Change and integrating all the other pieces. For example, the Montana Behavioral Initiative fits under the Twenty-First Century Model of Change or Model of Education. Response to intervention. We have several examples of collaboration that are going on. We're working on decreasing the number of students who drop out. That's one part of the process. But the other is increasing the rigor and engagement of learning for all students. Our Twenty-First Century strategic plan will identify how the district moves in that direction. And I, a couple of, three areas of collaboration that I'd just like to point to, two are relating to the university. And I would suggest And I would suggest that five years ago, we did not have the amount of collaboration that we have with the university. I'd say 24 months ago, we didn't. 12 months ago, we didn't. Just this week, I've been involved in two collaborative activities. One today was with the Digital Academy at the Phyllis J. Washington College of Education, and it was our counselors, our principals, our curriculum people, working with the members of the Digital Academy to bring alternatives for learning to life for students. The second is a collaboration we're having also with the College of Education around what I think would be called a STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Initiative, that will...it's kind of related to what Mark was talking about. It'll involve externships for teachers. It'll involve an infusion of learning into our middle schools. It will involve using university students, our student teachers, et cetera, in new and different ways. So these are collaborations that we've not had in the past. So the Health Science Academy is one example of a 21st-century element that's in the 21st-century model of change and will be in the strategic plan. Where it's off to a great start. I'm not sure exactly Mark's numbers about high school student numbers, but Big Sky's freshman class is larger than it's been in many years. I don't know how far back, but certainly in many years. And a third of the freshman class are involved in the Health Science Academy. So it's also having a big imprint at Big Sky. Also, to Chairman Raybind's point about courses that help you, high school that helps you in college, the Project Lead the Way curriculum that they're using as the Career and Technical Education component of the Health Science Academy will also earn students' college credit when they have finished four years. So it's another way that we're pointing kids to be career and college-ready. At the Health Science Academy, we're planning a community celebration as an element of the launch of the first-ever Health Science Academy in the state of Montana. And it will be taking place in mid-October, and you will all be receiving invitations. So I won't give the rest of it away. Robotics and electronics, it's hard to believe that this time last year, we weren't even talking about it like we are now, and it's like, okay, we're doing this. Very exciting. I think we will see the biggest increase at the middle school level. We're going to have a robotics and electronics team at all three of our middle schools, and they are coordinated by a wonderful CS Porter teacher whose name is Scott Edge. Thank you. Then the high school teams, we're getting ready, and we're going to be communicating earlier and in more depth with our community partners. So watch for more information about the robotics and electronics. Questions? Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Allen. Dr. Apostol.
Yes, one of the things we're discussing, and I'm hoping we move in this direction regarding robotics and electronics, is to take advantage of the great talent that we have in our elementary schools on behalf of staff and students. And I'm encouraging that we make that connection as soon as possible. I think that's really important in terms of a K-12 perspective. We have quite a few kids that I've talked to that would be very interested in, at the elementary level, in participating. The second thing that I would like to mention is that I would encourage the board to take another look at the 21st-century initiative document. It's online. I think it would be important for the board to really understand what that document is saying, because what we're going to be pushing is that it's going to be a living, breathing document. It's not a document that's gonna stay on the shelf. It's gonna be something that encompasses and integrates everything that we're doing in our district. And that's why Karen referred to the very specific six elements of change. And in our development of a three-to-five-year strategic plan, those six elements will be the driver. So being acquainted with what those elements are all about, and it's kind of spelled out in this document, I think would be very important for all of us to take advantage of and understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Apostol. All right, we'll move on, trustees, to item number 10, Finance. And 10A is to approve claims. The claims for July 2012 are in our packet, and the administration recommends that we approve those claims tonight. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Trustee Sadler, sir, second. Seconded by Trustee Lem. Any discussion on this item? Board discussion? Okay, seeing none, is there any public comment? All right, all in favor then of approving the claims? Let me see, yes, those are approved unanimously. Thank you. And now we'll go to the General Fund Budget Update. This is an information-only item. Mr. McHugh.
All right, thank you. In your packet at page 27 is the expenditures, month-to-date and year-to-date, and these are for July, so this is the first month of the new fiscal year, running through June 30, 2013. So the month-to-date and the year-to-date are identical. Looking at the expenditures, this month will be the month with the fewest expenditures in both the elementary and the high school, and that's primarily because the contracts for our certified staff, the first payment for those folks doesn't kick in until September 20th. And so this month and next month will be the lightest months that you'll see. Within the salaries items on the elementary side, that amount consists of about $133,000 in classified staff salaries and payments, $43,000 in administrative salaries, and then the remainder is spread among substitute salaries and some teacher salaries for work during the summer, support services that are non-classified. Then in the high school side, the $217,000 is $112,000 of classified, about 83 of administrative and other making up the remainder of that there. You'll see the work comp, health insurance expenditures, like salaries, are also lighter this month and will be higher, as you'll see when we get to September. The utilities, this month, we're moving forward with a little bit of a credit balance on our electric on both sides, and that's because when we make our payment in June, it covers two months, and so that's why those amounts are quite low. Next month, they'll be closer to the $30,000 per month range, and as we get into the winter, they'll be in the 40s and 50,000 per month. Just trying to give you a little more detail on a few of these categories. The supplies, well, the insurance, insurance, general liability insurance, this is the month-to-date, year-to-date, and that amount won't go up. That's the full obligation for insurance that you see there under Insurance Property Liability, 201, 750 Elementary and 170 High School. Telephone, we have a credit, essentially, this has got that overlap too, and it'll correct itself because we have essentially a credit balance sitting in there. Supplies, $42,000, elementary, $30,000. High school, supplies budget includes what you typically see in the terms of supplies for the classroom, but also small amounts of supplies, very small amounts, in other areas, books, periodicals, that type of thing. But primarily, it's gonna be your supplies at each of the building levels. And, you know, this month is, and next month are probably, just in the certified staff, we'll see in after the first payments are made in September 20th for their salaries, that'll go up about $1,002,000 per month, elementary, and a million, about there, about $1,000, 1.1 million in the high school. Are there any questions?
Questions? All right, thank you, Pat.
You bet.
All right, Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation, Mr. Reed.
Good evening. We had a good start to school. Most of our projects are all wrapped up. We have two ongoing major projects that we'll move into the year with, and that's the wiring of the buildings that will continue to go on per the schedule. And also, the cameras for Sutton High School are being installed, and they'll probably go into October on that. In your package on page 29 and 30 is the Building Reserve summary for this month. On the elementary side, we're looking at a balance of right around 1.3 million. A lot of the projects that were outlined on the front of the Building Reserve was, have been completed, and now we're looking at the core of this Building Reserve on the elementary and the high school side will be scrutinized real close for routine maintenance, broken windows, leaky roofs, doors, and those kinds of things. So both, and on the high school side, it's 2.83 million, right where it should be. These numbers are just a little bit off. I've spent some of that numbers between this report and today. Any questions?
Just a comment, Scott. I know that we have had discussions about the fact that we've got to be very careful and monitor the Building Reserve on both sides of the House very carefully, and you're doing that, and you're doing an excellent job. You indicated to me that we are doing exactly what we said we were gonna do in relation to the Building Reserve, what we told the voters we were gonna do. That's what we're doing. But there are unexpected expenses, which we've communicated to the community also, and they're aware that it's just like having your own home, things come up. And some things have come up, and we've dealt with them appropriately, but we're within budget, and we're basically, it's promises made, promises kept. So good work.
All right, thank you, Mr. Reed. Trustees, we'll move on to PNP to approve the Personnel Report, which is in our packet. Is there a motion to approve that? Wow, I got three at once. We'll go with Trustee Knapp as the person who made the motion, and Trustee Lem is the second. All in favor of approving the Personnel Report? Deb? Yes, I know. That's unanimous, Elizabeth. Thank you. Trustee Dirk is gonna be available about now. He said about 7:30, so we're gonna try to get him online here. Okay. Did you have, Mr. McHugh, did you have a comment on the Personnel Report?
Well, actually, what I'd just like to do is just talk about negotiations and meet and confer for a few minutes, as Dr. Knapp said that... I just wanna just actually second what he said there because of the...should I wait there for a second? I just wanna, you know, say the same thing as like Dr. Knapp. I really believe that the meet and confer and the actual groups that we negotiate with were, I would refer to them as three words, respectful, professional, and reasonable. And it really is nice because the fact is, if you guys say yes, we're gonna have 1,400-plus employees, they're all gonna be settled for the school year, and it's a big deal to have that occur. And we really do appreciate the fact that the teachers, Melanie and her group, and Diane Anderson was a very active member, and MM CEO, Pat, Scott, Mark, we really appreciate the fact that everybody got together and worked hard to make sure that everything went well. And it really is, it feels good to be able to settle contracts, meet accreditation standards, and do the things that we do for Missoula County Public Schools. So I just thought I'd get up and say thanks to a lot of people, so.
Great, thank you, Pat. Okay, we're on to number 12D, to approve out-of-country travel request for Big Sky students to Japan. The travel request is included in our packet. It was discussed at the PNP Committee meeting on August 29th. The committee supports the administration's recommendations for us to approve this travel request. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Trustee Sadler, seconded by Trustee Holland. Is there board discussion? Trustee Bixler.
Thank you. I'll just be quite brief, although I was at the PNP Committee, and we did recommend that this travel, out-of-country travel request be approved. Since then, I've had a change of heart, thought long and hard about this, and it's a difficult decision for me, but we have put in place procedures, we've been doing this for years on this board, to get things streamlined, to make sure that our safety and the welfare of our children come first, and that has been put down in our policies. Policies clearly state that any type of out-of-country travel must be submitted to the board for approval six months in advance or more. This is, you know, something that we've developed over the number of years. Requests for travel would come in on a handwritten piece of paper with just the barest of information. We've come up now with a standardized form that lists all types of information that the board is interested in, how the people are gonna get their chances for fundraising, chaperone to student ratios, just a number of pieces of information that are very, very important for us to understand prior to granting this type of out-of-country travel. And while we talked at PNP and saying, you know, we understand that sometimes it just doesn't work to get it six months beforehand, and we're gonna make this one exception, but this is the last time, I've raised three kids, and that doesn't work. You know, you do that once to one kid, and I guarantee you, the next time the exception comes up, well, you did it for him. And to me, in all good conscience, I would not be able to vote against something else that comes up in the future that doesn't meet those timeframes. So for that and a number of other reasons, most particularly if the people in charge weren't able to get this piece of information to the board, what other pieces of information may have fallen through the cracks to prepare for this trip, I think that it's just too soon, the timeframe is too condensed, and that I will have to vote against this.
Thank you, Trustee Bixler. Further board discussion? Trustee Knapp.
I think Scott is really correct in his presentation. I will support this particular trip, but my suggestion is as follows, because I think this is the way this really needs to be handled. The simple fact that this particular trip even arrived at the board's level, knowing that it was not in, not consistent with policy, is, I think, really the issue. This shouldn't really be in front of the board if it does not meet the sniff test, if it does not pass the basic tenet of being an approvable study based upon our standard guidelines. So my recommendation to administration is that from here on out, if these types of trips do not meet what stands in the policy, that they don't even arrive at our level. They shouldn't even arrive at our doorstep if they don't meet the basic criteria required of these kinds of trips. The fact that this was presented to the board was, I think, really where the rails came off. It shouldn't even have arrived at the board level.
Thank you. Further board discussion? Trustee Sadler.
I made the motion for approval based on the idea that this is a trip for students. It wasn't the students who didn't do the paperwork right and so forth. And we have the approval of the executive regional director and of the superintendent, it says so in the motion. And the most honors law can be administered in a very humane fashion by people who understand that there's different circumstances under each one. Because this is such a great benefit for the students, I feel that we really should support this. I do agree with Trustees Bixler and Trustee... I do agree with Trustees Bixler and Trustee Knapp in the fact that this probably shouldn't have come up to the board, because it wasn't a prima facie a right for us to see, however it did, and we have to see the, it's before us, and so we should make a decision on what is before us, and because this is in front of us, I intend to agree to it.
Thank you, sir. Further board discussion, Trustee Holland, and then Trustee Wells.
At the committee level, we decided to take this off the consent agenda and not put it on to make it clear that because of the concerns that Trustee Bixler talked about in terms of safety and travel, especially travel outside the country, this was going to be a topic to be discussed at this meeting, so that people understand how important it is, how seriously that the board and its administrators and its principals take allowing our kids to travel in situations that could be potentially problematic. However, we have been refining this form over the course of the time I've been on the board, from the handwritten form to something that, through development, requires a lot of information, and I think that's one of the problems that might have actually caught this form up, because as it was explained by the administration at Big Sky, they were waiting until they had the exact name of the staff that would be traveling before they submitted it, because they thought that that, that those names were important, rather than the fact that they would have committed staff to be announced, which we've seen in other forms. So, I think because of the, having the form be refined so much in the past several years, I don't, there wasn't anything malevolent about how late it came in, they were actually trying to get as much information as they could in order to have the form approved. So, I think that's why I seconded the motion, and for the same reasons that Mr. Sadler said, so the kids don't suffer for a decision made to try to get more information rather than less, so.
Thank you very much. Trustee Wells.
I thought you said it very nicely, although, I guess what came to mind for me, that I would say that our administration, you know, screwed up getting this so late, however, our duty as trustees is to take, I believe that our duty and my duty is to make sure that all of our kids are getting all the opportunities that they can, and this particular one, which really struck me, was that some of our folks cannot afford to go on a trip to, a trip like this, it's all being paid for by, by the sister school, and I couldn't, I couldn't turn that down, such a terrific opportunity.
Thank you, Trustee Wells. Further board discussion? Okay, well, I'll weigh in on it. I was absent from this meeting, and I certainly respect and agree with the comments that my fellow board members have said, you know, I think all of those things are true. The reality is that Board Policy twenty-three-twenty requires the superintendent and the board to approve out-of-country travel. Since Dr. Apostol's been superintendent, we have been hammering on this issue. It's got to be in, it's got to be in, it's got to be in, and I think the buck stops with us, so I'm going to support my colleague, Trustee Bixler, in voting no. Is there further board discussion? Is there public comment? Dr. Apostol.
Number one, I apologize to the board. You're absolutely correct, this should have never come to you. And I took, and number two, I take full responsibility. I can also tell you that it will never happen again. I think we've been real clear on where we stand and where I stand from this point on, but you're absolutely right, it should never have come to the board and put the board in this position, and it won't happen again. I think the message is clear.
Board chair, Adam, Dirk here.
Adam, would you like to comment?
Sorry, I just have one question. If we vote against, what are the consequences related to this trip?
If the majority of the board votes no, the trip won't happen, because it requires superintendent and board approval for the travel to occur.
Okay, and the students, the teachers, the parents involved have failed to clear a procedural hurdle, and that's the reason that the board is inclined to vote against the trip? Am I, is that a fair representation?
I think we need to clarify that the board is not inclined to vote no. There are only two members of the board here who have expressed an inclination to vote no, everyone else is in support of it. The first part of your comment is accurate.
Okay, and then, I apologize, I don't have the materials related to the trip in front of me. When would this trip take place?
Mrs. Allen, do you have the details?
I'm sorry.
They're in our packet.
I have, they'd be leaving on October thirteenth through October twenty-second.
Yeah, I heard October thirteenth, is that correct?
That's correct.
Right, for five, and they'd be going to Japan.
My final question, is there any appeal after the decision here tonight, or are we the final vote?
Bea, would you like to comment on that?
Adam, this is it. If the board says no, it's no.
Yep, okay. I, you know, I plan to vote to allow the trip to happen. I hear that we've got this pledge from Dr. Apostol to reform the policy, the procedure, to make sure that it's corrected. I recognize that the board has been dealing with this, and we've been getting hammered on it, but the fact that there isn't another opportunity for an appeal here is one that I'd ask my fellow board members to take into consideration, with all due respect to everyone who's spoken on the issue tonight. I think great points have been raised, but the fact that there isn't an opportunity for anyone to appeal the decision that we reached tonight is a fact that I think is important. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Dirk. Is there further board discussion? Trustee Bixler.
I just need to make a point of clarification, and Ms. Allen, if I am wrong, please, please correct me. As far as I understand, no students have been selected for this trip yet, there has been no, only the people who, only two of the chaperones have been selected, and that in reality, only students that would be qualified for this trip would people who already have a passport, so that effectively eliminates a large majority of the Big Sky population that really would benefit from this travel. I'm not quite the hard-hearted person that you think I am, those are all factors that weigh in on my consideration. Ms. Allen, am I wrong?
You were, you were correct at the time of the P N and P meeting, I would not believe that we would be correct now, but I do not have the names of the students. The one thing I think that's unusual and unique about this situation is that it is the sister school relationship with the community in Japan, and had it not been that relationship, I wouldn't be here for this discussion.
Okay, is there further board discussion? Is there public comment? All right, all those in favor of approving the motion to approve the out-of-country travel request for Big Sky students to travel to Japan in October of twenty-twelve, raise your hand, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven ayes, those opposed, and two noes, and the motion passes, and our Big Sky students will be going to Japan, compliments of the Japanese funders, which we appreciate. All right, Trustee Knapp.
Yeah, just a piece of information, while Scott is correct that it can take a while to get a passport, having had an interesting experience, I will tell you that one can get a passport very expeditiously with the assistance of our legislators. Senators Tester, Bacchus, and Congressman Riegerberg are exemplary when it comes to pushing the envelope and doing things like this, so that if there are students who are interested and who don't have passports, those are the numbers to call. They are very good at getting this expedited.
Thank you, I'll pass that along.
Great, thanks for that information. All right, we'll move on to item twelve E, to approve one-time-only increase to district contribution to the health insurance premium and to approve salary wage increase for eligible employees, the district contribution to monthly health insurance premium shall be six hundred and sixty-three dollars a month for the year twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen. This is a one-time-only increase of thirteen dollars per month. This item was discussed at the P N and P committee meeting on August twenty-ninth, and the committee supports the administration's recommendation that we approve the contribution. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Trustee Sadler, and it has been seconded by Trustee Wells. Is there board discussion? Seeing none, is there public comment? All right, all those in favor of approving the motion, and that passes unanimously. Thank you. Adam, I assume your hand was up, because I didn't hear anything.
My hand is high.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will now move to the consent agenda, which is very short tonight, from P N and P, to approve cooperative sponsorship with Laola Sacred Heart for Wrestling, and to approve a grant application summary, IDEA interconnected systems pilot project. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Trustee Knapp, seconded by Trustee Sadler. Is there public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda. Adam?
Hi.
All right, that's approved unanimously, with the exception of Debbie, she stepped out of the room, so we can check with her when she's back, Elizabeth. Oh, she raised her hand, she went out, okay, then it's unanimous. Thank you for catching that. Superintendent's report, Dr. Apostol.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to thank and congratulate all of our staff, certified and classified, for a great start to the school year. Buses were running on time in most cases, teachers were in their classroom, teaching on the first day. We had a little, not a little glitch, it was a considerable glitch at one of our high schools in terms of scheduling, but we've overcome that, and we're moving forward, and we're analyzing the system and the process so that it won't happen again. But overall, we've had, again, a great opening in our schools, and we're off and running in terms of our initiatives and our objectives. Very quickly, some important dates, Finance and Operation Committee meeting Wednesday, September nineteenth, twelve noon, in the Business Building Boardroom. Professional Development, no school for students, on Monday, September twenty-fourth, that's all schools. Personnel Negotiations and Policy Committee meeting Wednesday, September twenty-sixth, at noon, in the Administration Building, Room fourteen. Teaching and Learning Committee meeting Monday, October first, twelve o'clock noon, Administration Building, Room fourteen, and our next scheduled regular board meeting is Tuesday, October ninth, six P M., at Sealy Lake, in the Sealy Lake High School Gymnasium, where we're looking forward to having the meeting up at Sealy.
Thank you, Dr. Apostol. There's no old business tonight. Under new business, we have the ratification of a one-year agreement with the M E A M F T, included in our packets a summary of changes for the twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen collective bargaining agreement, and the administration recommends that we ratify the one-year agreement with the M E A M F T. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Trustee Holland, seconded by Trustee Sadler. Is there board discussion? We've heard some comments of gratitude, is there any other comment? Trustee Bixler.
Just again echoing what everyone has said, a ninety-two percent ratification rate is wonderful, thank you so much, I'm sure that's a lot of due to your hard work, as well as everyone else's, and I'm fully supportive of this contract, thank you, ever, everyone involved.
Thank you, Trustee Bixler. Further board comment? Trustee Holland.
Yes, I just wanted to also thank Ms. Charleston for waiting until the staff was back to held the election. I think that in terms of information, in terms of education, in terms of participation and ownership in the decision, I really appreciate that you made that decision, so, thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Holland. Other board comment or discussion? All right, is there any public comment? Seeing none, all those who approve the motion, let me know.
Hi.
All right, we're unanimous on that, thank you. And on to sixteen B, to ratify one-year agreement with Trades and Crafts, included in our packets a summary of changes for the twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen collective bargaining agreement between the district and the Trades and Craft staff. The administration recommends that we ratify the one-year agreement with Trades and Craft. Once again, we will show our appreciation, state our appreciation to Mr. McHugh and his district team, Dave Sell, Bruce Mix, and Dennis O'Keefe and their team for the work on this agreement. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Trustee Sadler, seconded by everyone, but we'll put Ms. Wells's name on it.
Tony, just to point a clarification, their team was made up of Bruce Mix, Bruce Holden, and Mike Sluter, that was a typo, so just to recognize the people.
Oh, great, did you get that, Elizabeth, so the minutes?
Bruce Mix, he was there last year, Bruce Holden, and Mike Sluter.
And maybe Mr. McHugh can give you those names, correct spellings later, just to double check that we have those right. All right, with that correction, is there, we have a motion in a second, right? Is there a discussion? Is there public comment? All in favor of approving this motion?
Hi.
All right, and that passes unanimously as well. Thank you all for good work in getting those contracts put together and getting our school year off to a great start. The last item on our agenda is a continuation of an item from July, it's the continuation of the superintendent's evaluation, a general discussion. Given the nature of this discussion, I have determined that the superintendent's right to privacy supersedes the public's right to know, and so at this time, we will adjourn the formal meeting, and we will take a six-minute break, and we will come back into our executive meeting. Thank you all.